Hi.
We met back at the lunch.
I want to have a lizard cross.
Mary? Um, I'm sure, it's good to see you. Remind me your name.
Susan.
Susan.
That's what I heard.
That was the first meeting I had.
That is a tough one.
I remember that lunch. It's exciting. I was just in a meeting about Earth Day at the college. Do I have a class?
Oh. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
And isn't that funny that the host?
I listen to you more.
That happens a lot. They are too, though. These two are so.
Hey, doing, Andrew?
Good.
Harry Yale.
Life is good.
Life is, isn't it?
Despite all the crap that's going on. I don't believe any of it.
No thanks.
I'm doing well. How are you? Perfect.
I've known him since a young age. He got the city council getting a special dispensation to keep a pig in city rooms. Like those little pot-bellied things? You know? Like it always says, "Pig." Says, "Rip." It was swine. I called him, "Mrs. Ford." Andrew said, "I read this. I..." He didn't think it applied to my pig at all, because he's got, he's like a dog. He said, "But I don't want to break the law."
If I could have your attention, please, I'd like to bring the Wilmington City Council regular meeting, March 3rd, 2022, to order. May we have roll call, please?
Jonathan McKay?
Here.
Michael Snar?
Here.
Bill Learman?
Here.
Bob Osborne?
Here.
Michael Albright?
Here.
Nick Keedland?
Here.
And Matt Kirkby?
Here.
Everyone, the President, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a lot going on, on the world stage these days, and we're gonna have someone speak to us about that a little later, but if you'd all join me in moments. Thank you. All right, under the President's agenda, we have the approval of our agenda for tonight. Anyone have any corrections or additions? Ask for a motion. Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by McKay, second by Learman, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 May you both... The agenda is accepted as presented. We also have before you the regular meeting minutes of the February 17th meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move to be accepted and presented.
Second.
Motion by Kirkby, second by Albright, to accept the meeting minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 May you both... Meeting minutes are accepted. All right, we have under my agenda also an Earth Day presentation. We have two folks here to talk with us for a little while about what we're... What they are helping us do to celebrate Earth Day. We have Susan Smith from Arrest... Or Arresting. From that other place.
From that other place.
And Darcy Reynolds. So, Darcy, are you gonna lead off?
Oh, sure. Do you want us where you want us, anywhere?
Come on out.
Okay. Swipe in? Right. As Mark said, Main Street and AZAC TimberTech are partnering together for a really exciting event, and I just wanted to give us a quick introduction of how this came to be, and then I'll let Susan take over. But part of Main Street's mission and objectives are to promote the downtown and always look for ways to enhance the cultural interest, to enhance it as a destination for not only residents in Clinton County, but those outside of Clinton County. So, having an event like this is completely different than what we typically do, and we are appealing to an audience that is very near and dear to our hearts, which would be family and children. There's a lot of things that go on downtown that are more adult-oriented, so this is just a great option to have, so we're very excited about it. Last year at the Wyman, Susan came up to me and said, "We ought to do this, but only for kids." And I was like, "Okay, all right, well, we'll talk." And then, after reflecting on it, I'm like, "Was that the one? Or did she really mean it?" And no, she meant it 100%. So, she had a very clear vision, and which is, you know, all about what they believe at TimberTech. So, this is going to come true, and it's really great to be doing something fun and exciting and a true partnership. So, I'm gonna let Susan take it from there.
Very good.
Yes, we are really excited to partner with the community, and AZAC would very much like to promote the fact that we are one of the biggest recyclers, and we are on our way to using a billion pounds of recycle in our company. So, this fits in so wonderfully and to bring in the families and communities. And one of the things I'm especially passionate about is STEM education, so bringing in the kids. We're going to have the Plastivan there. They are professional educators, outreach to promote plastic and the value that it adds to our lives, and they're going to also be talking about sustainability. We have really great... Every location is going to have a hands-on activity for all different levels of the kids that are gonna be there. My personal favorite is doing slime, so making slime and coloring slime. We'll have a station that we can custom color it. So, and it teaches them all about polymers, so it is not just, you know, just fun and getting hands-on doing, but actually teaching you about science. We'll have our engineers there as volunteers, and we have an exempt committee there that's going to be all-staffed at our TimberTech barn. We're hooked up all with the trolley, because the trolley thing was such a cool part of the Wyman, so it's like, we gotta have that, too. So, we're connected with... We're partnering with Wilmington College, and we're going to have all sorts of different tables and sustainability events over on Sugar Tree. And they're going to be doing lots of art demonstrations and crafts with the kiddos as far as recycling there as well. And then we have two more stations. We're going to do music, making instruments, using instruments over at the Murphy Theater. So, that will be, I think it'll be wonderful. And the last one is at...
On Lincoln.
On Lincoln.
Yep.
On Lincoln at History Center. Sorry, I should have known that one.
She's not here, it's okay.
Yeah, it's okay. Well, and there's gonna be food trucks at each one of them, too, so we have Kabbahaus making pizza like they did over at the Wyman, and we have a wonderful lawn there. So, we have indoor and outdoor, because it's in April, so we have to be prepared for bad weather in case that happens. What did I miss on here? I think, looking at, like, there's gonna be a clothes recycling and mending tent to, you know, really promote the idea that clothes don't always just have to be thrown away. We're also gonna give out trees.
Trees.
Every participant can plant, take a tree home and plant it, so it's gonna be planting the future in Wilmington or planting the future in Clinton County.
Right.
Yeah. And... We're also gonna have a static display up at the courthouse, which will be a very dramatic example of what kind of recycling happens or doesn't happen within a week to 10 days right here in our own community. So, we're just trying to make it more real. Instead of that big, broad-name recycling or the big, broad-name sustainability, which sounds so fancy, it's really just things we can incorporate into our daily lives very easily if we just think about it and have some good examples.
So, Susan, this is just kind of your brainchild, and then you ran with it?
She did. Well, there's an awful lot of people that are involved in coming together and, yeah, maybe just... I might have been unscathed, right? I'll pay that credit. But there's a lot of people that are partnering here, and that's what we're looking for, too, is that we have a call-out for anybody else that has cameras that they want to share. I've been involved in scouts for over 20 years, and this was the type of event, when I lived in Evansville, that our scout troops would go and they would earn their bronze awards, silver awards, things like that, that they can do. So, we're hoping. I threw out a stretch goal of having 1,000 people participate in this, and people are like, "Really?" No, but I don't know that it just might get that big, so you never know. We have an awful lot of very cool activities already planned, and we still have seven weeks to go before Earth Day, so. So, you'll see there's a handout at all your seats, and there's some extras here, but it's really virtually all day, Saturday, April 23rd, and it kicks off with a cleanup hosted by Annan Vance, and she does this on her own time, but as you all know, she is the code enforcement person for the city, but that's part of her giving back to the city, is organizing those things and holding them. So, she's been very successful. So, it'll all kick off at 8:30 in the morning with Annan, and then it will go on till 4:00 PM. So, you'll hear lots about it. We have a very good social media designer with Andrew Conro, so Facebook just keeps blowing up with it, so it will continue to do that, I'm sure.
Yes, please, please share our social media, like it and do whatever we feel is possible.
Yeah, right, exactly. Questions?
So, you realize you have in your audience a very good conductor that could help you on the trolley. Mr. Evans, that is his forte.
It does have some experience.
You might want to approach him.
I want to tell a story about the Wyman, so.
Thank you.
It was on at the Wyman.
Yes, that was where I found him. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you very much. All right, that ends the portion of the meeting under the President. Mr. Mayor? Morgan Wages. Go forward, please. Does that dare honk a cease already?
Thank you.
Would you introduce your family?
Yes, this is my wife, Chelsea, my daughter, Peyton, and my son, Parker.
Morgan, it's our... You were started. I forgot what happened last time. Something exciting downstairs happened.
Yes, yeah, I think it's either been the weather or something. We're here.
Ready, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Morgan Wages.
I, Morgan Wages.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
The ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
As a sergeant.
As a sergeant.
With the Wilmington Police Department of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
With the Police Department of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Yes, I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
You see everybody? On three. One, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
Now, we're gonna sign this. Got a pen? One more to sign for. You ought to be proud of your daddy. Come on, check me. Proud of your dad? You should be. I don't have the chance to read your code enforcement monthly report yet, but there are just a couple of things that kind of jumped out at me that I'm not sure all of our citizens are aware of these things, such as each resident's given three free walk pickup items a year. And all you have to do is call the landfill.
Call who?
And let them know, and they'll arrange it. Don't just sit it out there. You make sure your citizens coordinate with COU. The other thing is trash containers are supposed to be put back in their location within 24 hours of trash pickup day. Some people like to leave them out on the street all the time. Darcy, I think Tesla has for planning a monthly cleanup in Wilmington, and that's one Saturday a month. And it's litter and debris in our high-traffic areas. First event's on the 23rd of April, and you can call 937-382-5134 to volunteer, or email to annvance@wilmingtonoh.org. What a great thing for Anna to do. That's on her time. She is not on government payroll when she does it, and I'm very proud of that lady. Message from Human Resources, the Marathon Clinic has successfully expanded to the Plumbus area, and that will provide our employees with additional regional locations. We're also seeing an increase in employee participation at the clinic, including increased spousal independence. We see this increase as positive, as the increase in clinic engagement means a decrease in overall healthcare costs. Post-49 auxiliary Saturday, this Saturday, March 5th, 6:00 to 7:30, Locust Street, you're having chicken and noodles with mashed potatoes and green beans. That's down-home cooking, isn't it? Nine dollars apiece. Letting Lunch, that's Wednesday. The next one is March 9th, 1 to 2, at the United Methodist Church. And what are they having? Chicken and noodles and mashed potatoes. They had chopped steak last week, and it was cheesy potatoes, cherry pie. It was good. Clint County Homeless Shelter Soup to Go, that's for Friday, March 11th, from 11:00 to 1:00. It's a drive-through event at 390 West Main, and all proceeds, of course, are a benefit at the shelter. The Tire Recycling Program is gonna be at the end of April, on the 30th, Saturday, 9 to 11, up to Clint County Engineers. That's Clint County residents only, no businesses, a dollar per tire. So, if you got a tire that's been hanging around the garage forever, and you want to get rid of it, that's your chance to do it.
Do you know if that's just passenger car tires?
Yeah, this is passenger car tires. They have a separate recycling for truck and farm implement tires.
Make sure to register about 28 or 2 days in a row online.
To recycle tires?
Yeah, make sure to go to the website and register.
Okay. Not by the get a count of how many tires.
Yeah, they won't set bug line.
Yeah. Thank you, Ben. Now, it's my pleasure, although I hate the circumstances of why we're doing this, but I found out that the City of Wilmington has sister cities in the country of Ukraine, and our former mayor, Randy Riley, has actually visited. So, I asked Randy, would you be willing to come up and talk for about 30 or 35 seconds about the Ukraine? And Randy graciously agreed to do this. Randy, you got the floor.
By the time I get up here, my 30 seconds. Still get no respect. Thanks, I appreciate that. As you see on the... And thank you, Andrea and Brian, for putting this together. This is the representation of the Ukraine flag, so blue on the top, yellow on the bottom. But we had the opportunity several years ago to get to know our Ukrainian friends much more, much better. In fact, the sister-city relationship between the City of Cincinnati and Harkeev, of course, you've been hearing a lot about Harkeev the last week or so, unfortunately, but they've had a sister-city relationship that dates back to 1989, and it's a vibrant, growing relationship. In fact, every, every year, almost every year, they may have missed a few, they have representatives from Ukraine coming to Ohio and spending time and studying what we do. And I had the opportunity in 10 years ago, exactly 10 years ago, I believe it was this month, I got a call from Bob Dirch. Anybody remember Bob Dirch? He's the health department, health commissioner. Bob called me one day, just out of the blue, and said, "I got a big favor for you." He already retired, so I didn't know him anything about him. And I said, "Yeah, what do you mean, Bob?" And he said, "Was telling you about the sister-city relationship they had." And he said, "This year, rather than just hanging out at Cincinnati and seeing this big city, they wanted to go to a small city and see how they handled everything from trash to law enforcement, on and on, everything that you folks take care of." And of course, I said, "Sure, I'd be glad to do it." So, later, well, a few months later anyhow, we had about 12 people from Ukraine come to Wilmington, and they spent an entire day. The agenda was jam-packed full, and we started up here. We had each of them sitting in one of your seats, had a name black for each of them, and there was three mayors. I was, would have been like a county commissioner and several other people, and very, very interested in what we do. You may not understand, they do things a lot differently in Eastern Europe. They don't... Their recycling is pretty much nonexistent. Their wastewater treatment is there, sort of, but honestly, the toilets, no exaggeration, they don't have toilets. They have holes in the ground, and you walk in, straddle it, and dig your digits in. Yeah, I'm like, okay. Not that pleasant at times, but it's a whole different lifestyle, but they wanted to come see how we did that. So, they came, spent the entire day, and I think the things that they were most fascinated by was our wastewater treatment, our wastewater treatment plant and landfill. They just absolutely loved the landfill. They went down, and I was about to say that they dug into it, but they didn't dig into it, but they went down to where everything is being done. They wanted to see the drainage, they wanted to see the vents, they wanted to know everything that happens with the landfill, because basically, their dump's a dump. I mean, they just go throw stuff in a hole, and it's hidden for a while. So, they learned a lot from us. They were taking a lot of notes, and it was really a fun day, but I got to meet people from these three cities. The sister-cities relationship actually starts in Cincinnati. You can go online, they have a wonderful website. It's called the Cincinnati-Harkeev Sister City Project. Wonderful website, but our relationship, Cincinnati's relationship with Harkeev is vital, and these other... We had mayors from Solcenitskova, Shagaya, and Moretta came also, and they were fascinated to see what a small city did. Also, the cab service. They just, they couldn't believe that we drove people from one side of town to the other for a buck. They thought that was absolutely phenomenal. But we spent a lot of time telling them what we did and taking them around and showing them everything that we had been up to. In fact, we ended up out at the airport, this was, of course, not too long after DHL, you know, gave us the videos. So, they were really interested in what we were doing as a community, to bring trade back in and to grow our business. And at that time, we had a lot of folks working out at the airport, trying to make things happen again. So, they loved that. It was, it was a full day, starting at 8:00 in the morning and going until, it was after 5:00. We took them to the General Denver for lunch, and they thought it was really humorous that Molly tried to make pork for them. In fact, they did try to give us that. "Yeah, this isn't what we expect." But they were just absolutely delightful as she tried to make their national soup. But the thing that they really liked about the General Denver was the history of it, and that we cared enough about our history, that Molly and Mark put their lives into, you know, rehabbing this whole facility. Then I took them into the Murphy Theater. I wasn't on the schedule, but they had to see the Murphy Theater. I took them to several other places, did a downtown tour, and just had an absolute ball with these folks. Surprisingly, the next, about eight months later, I got a call from my friends down at the sister-city relationship again, saying, "Okay, you've obviously made an impression on them. We have a delegation from Cincinnati going to the Ukraine in March of the next year. They want you to come. They've singled you out. I don't know what you did to these folks, but they've singled you out, they want you to come to Harkeev and spend a week." Actually, we landed in Kyiv, and then we took a train to Harkeev, which you've seen this train on the news, sadly enough. We took the train to Harkeev, and we spent a week in Harkeev, staying at their university, which, as I understand it, is now pretty well blown down by it, and spent time in the town. It's a beautiful town, completely different than it was nine years ago. But we met with government officials, we met with, we met with anybody that wanted to be with us. We met with them. One of our dinners, we had several big luncheons and dinners, and one of the last ones we had was at a country club just outside of Harkeev, and the lady that was our host was a university professor, and she came in to talk to us and to show us around. Her husband was an attorney, and she brought her son along, just to show him, you know, show him off, I guess. But it was fascinating, because this was just before they had all the tumult that happened about nine years ago. But in this one family, three people in one family, the father was adamantly in favor of staying with the Russians. He wanted to go back to the Russian influence. The mother wanted independence. No, 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 she wanted to join NATO. She wanted to go to the West, and then the son wanted to be completely independent, and they were adamant about that. In fact, they almost got into a food fight. It was, it was just, it was sad to see the division in just one family over their three options. And of course, you've been watching it on the news all week. But the devastation that's taking place now, Harkeev is really only about 90 miles from Russia, just that one little stretch, and it's only a couple hundred miles, actually, from Moscow. And here you can see on this map, Harkeev is the big white area in the middle, and then Solenitskova is just to the west, Moretta's southwest, and Shagaya is to the east, southeast. So, they're all within an easy drive of Harkeev, but they're all completely different. Solenitskova was our first place to go, they became our first sister city, and they focus a lot on industry and history. They have a huge museum dedicated to World War II history, which is just breathtaking and shattering to see. Moretta, on the other hand, I would describe it as a city of arts. They have a lot of poetry, a lot of painting, a lot of things going on in Moretta that just were so cool, I mean, just beautiful. Now, you know, I said Moretta, but I meant Shagaya. And in Moretta, the mayor of Moretta is a gentleman named Benjamin, I can't remember his last name, but he had actually been a Soviet or a Russian, not a little bit Soviet, skier. He was on their hockey team, and had a lot to tell us about skiing and how much fun it was. Of course, this is before the whole Russia thing started. So, we spent a lot of time with him, went to his house, had dinner at his house. It was a wonderful time, but these three cities, we have a relationship. You know, they're our sister cities, and when I was doing this nine years ago, signing the documents, and I think we have a copy of the documents, when we were signing the documents nine years ago, I did not take this lightly. You know, I've got two sisters, I don't know about you folks, but I have two sisters, love and care, and there's something about sisters that you don't get between me and my sisters. And when I was growing up, I had a sister that would kick anybody's butt not in my way. My sister, Belinda, was my protector a lot of the time, so there's something about sisters. Here's a copy of our, of our relationship. One is in English, the other is in Ukraine. And we had signing ceremonies. Masil Shabatko, he is the mayor of Solenitskova, and we signed on both of them. But when I was signing those, I never imagined that we would have sisters in such trouble. It didn't even dawn on me that anything could lead to what's going on now. In fact, when I was watching the news Tuesday night, or the night that it happened, the 24th, the night that the tanks started moving, the bombs started falling. twenty-fourth, the night that the tanks started moving, the bombs started falling, I started watching, always watched the eleven o'clock news, and I was watching the news, and then it kept going and going, switched over to national news. And at two o'clock, two-thirty in the morning, when I finally thought, "I gotta get to sleep," as I was walking up the stairs of our house, it dawned on me, I may have just seen the start of World War III. If you remember, the world wars that we've had, they started by, they started with a lot of stuff less than what we're seeing right now. So, I don't know where we're going, but I guess my point is, we have family. Here are a few notes that I got from friends down in Cincinnati, the Cincinnati chapter of the sister city relationship. This is from Marania. She wrote, well, actually, just Tuesday, on the first, just two days ago. "Morning in Ukraine. We are alive!" exclamation point. "Ukraine is changing. Ukraine is changing the world. It is so moving. We are all crying. We know that our freedom cost the lives of so many people. We are proud of our men for standing for the whole world. I'm writing to you and crying. Thanks for your support. It is priceless." They know we support them. Later that morning, just a few hours later, Nadia wrote, "We are in the subway. We don't come out. We're okay." Her husband Andrew was at home while they were bombing the center of town. It was fifty meters, fifty meters, that's not far. It was fifty meters from our block of flats. We had holes in the windows and the roof of our house. Andrew is okay, but full of rage. We are thinking about going away from Kharkiv by train, but there are lots of butts. Every day, we hope for better news, but each day is worse than anything before. And these notes just keep coming. Every day, I get about three or four notes from our friends in Kharkiv as part of the sister city relationship. Yesterday, Nadia sent another note. "I am not good today. I think I've had enough. Tomorrow, we will get to the train station, and we'll try to go somewhere else. I wish I had better news, but it gets worse and worse." The whole center of the city, this is Kharkiv, the whole center of the city is ruined. And she concludes, "Where will we go?" I can't, I could go on and talk about these marvelous, wonderful people even more. And they are marvelous, wonderful people. But all you have to do is turn on CNN, turn on the news, turn on the TV at any time, and you know, you know what's going on. I wanted to be here to remind you that there are scissors. It's a small world. And that five thousand miles from here to there is nothing, is nothing. I remember when I was a kid, I think I was about ten or eleven years old, John F. Kennedy stood in the shadow of the Berlin Wall. And I don't remember the crux of the whole speech, but I remember him saying, "I am a Berliner." He said it in German. "Ich bin ein Berliner." Sometime later, President Reagan stood in the same wall. He said, "Mr. Gorbachev, tear this wall down." And within a short period of time, that damn wall came down. I don't know what it's gonna take to get beyond where we are now. There's no wall to tear down. There was, there was nothing that, I can't think of anything that actually started this foot. It's not like somebody was assassinated or something happened. It was just Russia decided to attack. So, they attacked Ukraine. If anybody has any ideas, I'd love to hear them, I'd love to convey them on. But I feel like my heart's broken.
What kind of publicity, like with, like, my hometown has signage of our sister city. I was not aware of this, so I saw the social media posts. And I'm a relatively informed individual, so how can we get better signage on all points of entry? I didn't know that, and I bet many people did not know that.
You're absolutely right. And up until this happened, it wasn't like a big issue that we had sister cities. I think I wrote about it when it happened, I've written about it since, once or twice for the newspaper, but it's not like on the front of everybody's mind. I don't know what we can do to let people know, but, you know, they're not just people, they're not just, you know, men and women. You see the children crying as they're getting on the buses. They're ours. I am Ukrainian. You know, I'll take, I'll take what Kennedy said, and I'll say it now, I am Ukrainian. If that makes any difference to anybody, yeah, I'll be Ukrainian, absolutely. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see us get an Ukrainian flag fly underneath the American flag on our flagpole.
Give us one, we'd be glad to do it.
I'll do it.
And we have a sign shop.
We have those "Welcome to Wilmington" signs all around town, it'd be easy to put sister city on there sometimes.
Brian, we need to talk to the sign, the sign guys.
Thank you so much.
And there's a lot of websites I just put up here on ways to help, so.
No, thank you, Brian, I appreciate that. I have my back to you.
There's a lot of ways to help.
Timothy Snyder is an author. Actually, he's local. He was, he was from the Wilmington office. He has written a couple of books about the killing fields and things that happened after World War II, when Stalin was over in Ukraine. I encourage you to read his books, to read those books by Snyder. But when you read it, have some Kleenex nearby, because those books will rip your guts up. Absolutely devastating what Ukraine went through during World War II. And they were just getting back, I mean, it was a beautiful rural country. It reminded me so much, when we went on the train going from Kiev to Kharkiv, watching, looking out the window, it looked like Ohio going by. It was absolutely beautiful. That's, that's all I have, unless you have any more questions. But I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that we have family in Ukraine, and I am a Ukrainian. I hope you'll share that.
Thank you, Randy, we appreciate you giving it up.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Appreciate you doing this. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read now. "Whereas the city of Wilmington stands in solidarity with the people of Ukraine in the face of this unjustified attack on their country, their sovereignty, and their lives. And whereas more than five hundred thousand Ukrainians have fled their country," I want to correct that number, "today on the radio I heard it was over a million, with an estimated four million more seeking aid and protection. Whereas aggressive sanctions by the United States and its allies must continue to hold Russia and President Vladimir Putin accountable for the assaults on Ukraine and to stop these senseless acts of war. Whereas showing unwavering resolve and bravery for his country and his people, Ukrainian President Volodymyr Zelensky refused evacuation efforts and joined in the defense of his country, stating, quote, 'The fight is here. I don't need a ride. I need ammunition,' end quote. Now therefore, I, John M. Stanford, Mayor of the city of Wilmington, Ohio, do hereby proclaim solidarity with the people of Ukraine and our fight for freedom, and I urge all citizens to join in condemnation of Vladimir Putin's act of war and Russia's invasion of a free and democratic Ukraine."
Mayor, if I may, that's absolutely wonderful. And Andrew, if you could email me a copy of that, I will get it to the folks down in Cincinnati, and it will go right out to our friends in Ukraine. They'll have that tomorrow. So, thank you.
Randy, I think you went just a little over the thirty-five second. Thank you.
I'm sorry, man.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you for everything you're doing. Otter Vance.
Nothing at the moment, Mr. President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schadiger.
So, Otter Vance and I are gonna tag team this here in just a second. And my heads-up presentation sounds pretty trivial after what we just, what we were just presenting with, but we'll do it anyways. So, formerly known as Veteran, now known as Centerpoint Energy, they let us know just recently, they're gonna have another gas line project starting in the spring. I don't know if you can see this map, but it's gonna be in the northeast quadrant of our city, Hyatt Avenue, Virginia Circle, Hyatt Street. That's, that's where this is happening. This just happens to be where we have a paving project ready to go. It's on the shelf, ready to go. So, we're meeting with them tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We're meeting with them tomorrow.
Morning.
Yeah. To tell them, "Hey, you guys need to hurry up and get this done, because we have a paving project on the shelf that we wanna, that we wanna do in the northeast quadrant." So, this is something new, and it's part of our heads-up program. This is gonna be a new thing that we're gonna do every time soon. Water tower maintenance. Two water towers will temporarily, temporarily be taken out of service this year for maintenance. The Fairgrounds Tower will be drained on April eighteenth so that it can be washed out. During the same timeframe, the other tower, the other towers we visually inspected. Suez has scheduled the repainting of the wet and dry interiors of the sixty-eight tower around the week of July twenty-fifth. I wouldn't anticipate any disruptions at all, but just be aware that two of our towers are being serviced, and it's just part of our ongoing maintenance program with our water towers. Something that we did two years ago. Other things to watch out for. Davis Drive, I've brought this up before. The city's exploring combining multiple phases. We've, we've talked about this originally. Right now, we're on board for Phase One, which is about a third of the project. And we've talked about Phase Two and Phase Three to try to complete this project. We are looking at combining multiple phases of Davis Drive paving rehabilitation project. Our construction beginning in twenty-three. This project will sell October of this year. The engineering to finish out the design for this project is estimated at two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. So, heads up, that's something that we're gonna be asking for here shortly, because we wanna go ahead and have the whole project designed, because I have, we are still looking for additional funding, knocking on doors and stuff, trying to get Davis Drive completed. Phase One's ready to go. The goal is, can we do more than just Phase One and sell it this year? We're knocking on doors, we're trying to get as much funding as we can. But we have to have a design before we can do that. So, that is coming as a supplemental in the future. Cuba Road Broadway Crossing is targeted for a safety upgrade this year. This will include the installation of safety gates, and I have to do it, safety gates? Safety gates? We get a lot of complaints about that over there on Cuba Road, that they don't have the safety gates. We were out there, and, you know, you can see vehicles and trucks, they just blow right through it. But anyways, it's anticipated to start later this year. This project is federally funded through Ohio Rail Development Commission, and will involve zero city dollars. So, it's not like one of those things that you guys will, you all will be involved in, but it's something that'll be happening here at the end of the year. And it's one hundred percent federal dollars, and I'm excited about that.
Is there enough room there for safety? I mean, you couldn't back up a whole lot of traffic.
Right. No, there's not a lot of, but there's also not a lot of traffic, but people tend to just ignore it.
Well, remember, the Reddymix trucks all use that road now. They took away their, their access from sixty-eight. And imagine that, all their traffic now goes that way.
So, I think I brought, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I brought this up last time about the Lithrey Warren Peace Path Extension Project, that we will be, we are receiving our five hundred thousand dollar grant. We received it, then it was taken away, now we're getting it. But it's a reimbursable grant, so we will need to expend the money before receiving any grant money, so this will also require supplemental. We're not gonna do that yet, and that's coming. And then, last year, in May, almost a year ago, I told you about the pole relocation for Romback Avenue would be over four hundred thousand dollars, that we would have to supplement that as well. We have still not received an invoice on that. But when we do receive an invoice, which I anticipate we will, we will have to pay that, but we have not received an invoice for that. So, that supplemental will be happy in the future. Airborne Road. Again, Dan, thank you for the support with the six twenty-nine grant. Our match will be approximately eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. We will be, this is something probably new for you. We will be supporting a match with permissive tax funds as well as general fund money. And I have been working closely with Otter Vance throughout this entire process. It will require supplemental appropriations, but I have submitted a letter to the county commissioners, to the county engineer. And we have approximately three hundred thousand dollars in permissive tax money that we'd like to use for this. So, that would offset that eight ninety. And so, I don't know if Otter Vance puts the same thing about that yet until we get to the next screen. But we feel that we can pay for this with our permissive tax fund and our cash. So, we'll get to that in the next screen. But I wanted to give you a heads up that we're not gonna use all of our general fund money on that match. We're gonna be using permissive tax money as well, in addition to the one point one-ish million dollars that we received in grant funding through the state of Ohio. My other heads up, projects and private development, there's a lot of this going on right now, require the city to have inspectors on site. We didn't necessarily budget for this, so it's something I keep bringing up, I brought it up last time, I'm bringing it up again today. When we have these, these big developments happening, you know, in Timberland, you know, Kettering Health, all these developments, we need to have inspectors on site. It's gonna cost money, it's gonna require supplemental appropriation. It's a heads up, it's something that's coming. So, at this point, Otter Vance, I can kinda turn it over to you and point to things, but this is something Otter Vance and I discuss a lot, and Otter Vance put this together, and I think it gives us a really good picture of where we are today and where we, where we'll be in the near future, so.
Are you able to enlarge that at all? No.
Maybe, but I, I can, but I'm afraid too.
That's right.
Because I can, I thought I could do this, but maybe not.
I'll try to be as concise as possible. What you see there is, in the very first column, is the year 2020. And those were, thank you. The Service Director is my man of life. Thank you very much. Thank you. It, it just gives a, just a quick encapsulation of what our beginning balance was, and this is the general fund over that we're talking about. That's the one that I keep the nearest and nearest to my heart. Although I love all the rest of the funds too, this is the one that we are watching. The, and it gave an ending balance of, oh, I think, six million dollars and some change. So, that would be the beginning balance in 2021.
Can you see that? I don't know if you can see it or not, but yeah. At the beginning, it was a little less than five in twenty, and it was a little over six at the end of twenty, so a little over six at the end of twenty-one, and so on.
In 2021, this previous year, the only thing really of note, other than the expenditures and the receipts that we've gotten in, was when we needed to come up with the one point eight million dollars that we did this time in the spring of last year to supplement what we needed for the Romback Avenue project. So, at the end of 2021, we had six point one million dollars in our carryover. When we look at 2022, we start with that six point one million. We have our estimated revenue of thirteen million four seventy-one. And then we have budgeted in the appropriations, twelve million eight sixty-one. You see under where it says expenses? And then I added a line to the carryover purchase orders. Obviously, those will be dollars that will go out the door. Now, what we have from this point on is what we feel is the worst-case scenario for 2022. I have plugged in, in sort of a pink, possibly four hundred thousand dollars for residential paving. Now, that's not something that's set, nor have we appropriated it. It is a possibility if we find that this project, your northern quadrant, whatever quadrant, all those things, something that will come back to you all. But this is a number that I am relatively comfortable with today. Just below that is the four hundred thousand dollars for the poles that we just talked about, that Brian was discussing. And then just below that, in yellow, I wanted to highlight that, he was discussing eight hundred and ninety thousand that it would take for our match for Airborne Road. Three hundred $300,000 of it would have an appropriation in permissive tax, in permissive tax fund. So, the appropriation they ask out of the general fund will be the $590 in this scenario. Just below that, on the heads-up, we all know about the bridge at the cemetery, which is a city bridge, but it just happens to be in the cemetery, that we think it's $170,000 could be another ask from the general fund. And then below that, as Brian gave you his other heads-up, $284,000 for his engineering to design all of David's Drive so that we have it shovel-ready in whatever phases we do it in. However, that's a discussion for another day, how we're going to make that happen. But that, for today, we want that, we would like that engineering to be done in total. And then below that is the last piece, is the first payment for our O-PW-C loan on Romback Avenue now. So, what happens to the very bottom line at the end of 2022 is instead of, we had $6 million in carryover on January 1, we have almost $2 million left, less. Now, part of that is, that's what our carryover is for. We don't collect taxes to port taxes for any reason, and we have collected them to do things that we intend to do for the city. These items here for 2022 can be, could change. For example, is it already, if I use the OPW-C example?
Sure.
That payment to OPW-C states that it, we don't have to make that payment till the project is completed. And that deadline is somewhere in July?
July 1st.
July 1st.
So, Romback has to be?
So, if Romback's not completed July 1st, that payment will, that $200,000 goes away from this scenario, all of a sudden you have $200,000 more down in your bottom line.
Roll this over to next year, yeah.
And good rolls over. So, there's some fluidity to this example. What I wanted you to see is worst-case for 2022 and some of these projects that we have. And the suggestion that we would pay for Airborne Road, the general fund portion of Airborne Road at the $590,000 out of our existing reserves. What I tried to do with the next two years and several years ago, our bond counsel and our investment banker once said to me, don't do projections like that because just take that dart and throw it because, you know, it's like driving the car off the used car lot. This analysis will be different tomorrow, could be absolutely different tomorrow, so I just always want to qualify these statements. But when you look across the bottom, if what I did were some extremely conservative increases to revenue and expenses year over year, and then you look at the bottom line, and if there were no other things that cropped up and those projections were pretty good, we still have a $4 million carryover in the next two years. That's a magical number because we talk about the 25% that we like to keep in our pocket, we'd like our carryover to be. If you have a $14 million budget, that carryover should be 3.5. So, that $4 million is in that ballpark. The whole purpose of this is to give you a, these are the worst, what we, it's not going to be the worst-case scenario for this year, we all know that's just upon that line. But this is what we know today. This is what we know today. And if things would stay relatively steady, this is where we would be over the next two years. So, I don't want anybody to see, oh, we're going to spend $600,000 on Airborne Road, which is ready to go, been bid, it's been bid, we've got the grant money, it's going to happen, we have to fund that. This is, these two places, general fund and permissive taxes, where I believe is the best source to fund the rest of that project. That being said, you have to know these other things that are in the offing. Same thing with the $400,000 with the paving. If something happened and we said, okay, no, sorry, Brian, sorry, John, we're not going to pave this year, we have to add that. We have that flexibility, but these are the things that we know, and that's why I highlighted those.
And she built in that?
Over those other years.
Yeah.
And we still read the form in. Because I think ultimately, resident paving is important and we need to be able to try to go back to that. But we've got these big projects, Romback, we've got Airborne Road, we've got David's Drive, all in the offing that are also extremely important to the infrastructure of the city. But we also need to be able to kind of get a feel for where we are with that. Now, I've talked long enough, does anybody have a question?
We've had lots of conversations and it's, believe me, it stresses me out. But we had a conversation where I was like, you know what, and I know we're stressed out when we talk about the numbers and stuff, but at the same time, look at what we're able to do and still maintain a healthy carryover. So, I'm, I, this is a, for me, this is a positive. This has not taken into construction costs for David's Drive, which I think can turn all of this upside down, so I'm just going to say that right now. David's Drive construction costs are not built into this formula and that could change everything. Phase 1 is, we've got Phase 1 covered, but we don't have Phase, even though we're designing Phase 2 and Phase 3, it's not built into this. And from what I'm being told, it could be upwards of $6 million to complete the whole project. That's not built into this, which would change everything, everything. But it's very fluid, like you said, Auditor Vance, it's very fluid. If you understand, this is, this is like driving the car off the lot. It's going to change tomorrow. But right now, we sit with what we have in front of us, we know Airborne Road's happening, we know that's happening, we know, these are the things that we know that are happening right now, and that's why it's plugged in there. And I feel, I feel good about this, that we can do this and still have a healthy carryover.
And I wouldn't suggest that we're going to come back and say, okay, now we want to take a big chunk out of, unless we have some big windfall, out of the general fund for David's Drive funding. We would be exploring other funding costs, hopefully finding some other grant dollars, whatever those might be. If you borrow money, you know, we could still have to service that debt from the general fund. But we would then be sitting down and having this conversation extended, having to do with David's Drive. But it is still that unknown other than Phase 1.
Because I promised you guys, I am trying so hard to find other grant dollars for David's Drive. I'm trying so hard, making calls, trying, everything I can to fund that project. You know, I don't want to do it in phases, but you can elect what you can afford, so that's what we're at. Any questions about this?
And I'm willing to talk to anybody one-on-one.
Me too.
On the side, at any point in time and revisit this kind of conversation, but, you know, we'll keep you updated as these things come and go. But at the next council meeting, you're going to probably see these big supplemental.
You're going to start seeing them, yeah.
And so, if anybody has issues or wants to discuss them further, please do so in the next week or so, give us a call, give Brian a call, come in, sit down with us if you want. But we will be asking for those supplemental's, just to get that money, not for paving, not for, you know, but then, and actually not for the poles on Romback Avenue.
So, I got a hand.
You know, we're playing that, oh, hey. It's always, it's always good to be optimistic and wishful. And, you know, we don't know about the cemetery bridge yet, all of those things, but the things that we know, we will come to you and ask for those supplemental's in the next meeting.
Airborne for sure.
Airborne.
That's for sure. And Trail, the Trail supplemental is for sure.
Oh, yeah, the Trail.
That's for sure.
And that has nothing to do with the general fund, those are grant dollars and it has its own fund called the Clarksville Connection Trail, whatever. So, you'll see, because the money comes out of there and then we're reimbursed that from the state and it becomes a 0-0 on that. It doesn't affect the general fund in any way, shape, or form, but you'll see that supplemental to that other fund.
Correct. Any questions? We'll be ready for the meeting. All right.
Thank you, Brian.
No, thank you, because I couldn't, yeah, this is all Auditor Vance. Thank you.
Does that complete your report?
Yes, it does, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Auditor Vance. Very concise overview of what we've got facing us.
That was good.
Could we possibly, or we don't have our copy of that yet, do we?
We don't. We can, we can get that, we'll send that to you when we send the other things that they've asked for, the Ukraine and the?
Well, I already sent Ukraine. Oh, wow, I was sitting here.
Anyway, I think that'd be good.
I'll, I'll, sure. We'll be happy to sign, we'll send that out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Council Committee reports of action. City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
We do have something, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
If council will remember, several months back, we asked the administration to kind of help us with the retained hotel lodging tax money and coming up with a revitalization grant. We had something in place, but it was learned that probably the administration should be building out those funds. So, on Tuesday night, we had a committee meeting and the administration presented us with the grant. Now, this is in your packet with the code enforcement if you want to look at it. And I'm not going to take a lot of time to go over this because all we need to do is have an up or down vote. One of the, I'm just going to go over a couple of the big changes in there and then I'll entertain questions. And Lucy has done an outstanding job of putting this together, so thank you, Lucy. This is going to be made up of committee members. And the committee members are going to be the city administrator, city deputy auditor, and the executive director of regional planning, who's Taylor Stuckard. And they will review applications that come in to the city from 501(c)(3)'s for these retained hotel lodging tax funds. And there's going to be a score sheet, and that sheet is your, it's on page 5. And they're going to be scored on a bunch of different criteria, and they have to meet criteria first to be able to obtain these funds. And, oh, she left, but that's okay. So, and there's quite a bit of money in this fund right now, but Main Street has been a recipient of these, Fourth of July fireworks and several other entities. And so, they're going to have these projects presented to them, they're going to meet, and they're going to be scored, and then the money will be doled out if they meet certain criteria and the point system, which has been laid out before you. Something that I brought up during the committee meeting, and Councilman Osborne, this is going to be new to you. We had a situation that pertained to out of county, or out of city, a request. And so, it has been put in here that the event must take place within the corporation limits. And those not withheld in the corporation limits will not be eligible for funding. I brought up about the Clinton County Fairgrounds, since this was considered to be county ground but inside the corporation limits. If it is inside the city limits, it's eligible, meaning if the event can be held at the fairgrounds. I think that is very important to point out, and that was something that was talked about. Something else that was talked about in the committee was a track record. If we get somebody unlike Main Street that does have a proven track record with these funds, how, and I believe you brought that up, Michael, you know, how's that going to be scored? And it was decided to leave it in there because, you know, we need to see that type of thing and make sure that these places hit out a proven track record and they're still eligible for the funds even if they, even if they do score a zero or have no proven track record with obtaining it. So, we decided to leave that in there. So, I am willing to entertain questions about this, and then I want to bring something up to council before we take an up or down vote on this, since this is not legislation, it just needs to be approved. Are there any questions that I can answer? Or Lucy can answer?
Can I add a few things?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, thank you for championing this. It's been an exciting thing to work on. The idea was especially in creating the metrics for how grants get awarded out was to create more of an emphasis on state of need and potential impact in the community. So, those are more heavily weighted columns. Track record, of course, will include it in there, matching contribution, overall quality presentation. We've also put in a rigorous set of measures for evaluating completion of the project and walking applicants through the process. But it's been reviewed by Murphy Theater, by Taylor Stuckard, by Main Street, so we've asked a lot of people.
CBD.
Yes, we've asked a lot of people involved in this to give their feedback because it should be user-friendly. But I think that's it. If anybody has any questions, we pretty much have to stay in our eyes.
It is, I know we talked about this on Tuesday and it hasn't changed that much, other than Bob, we've all seen this before. We landed here because it's really not a legislative function to administer a program like this, so it's time to turn it over and let the dollars be available for use in the community. So, I'm grateful to everybody for working on it.
Yeah, it's been a long process to get us to this point. Something that I did want to bring up, council should probably know how these funds are being built out, and I would, I would like to see with council's approval with this, like a quarterly report on just who's getting these funds, who is?
So, okay, so it'll be designated to the mayor's office because, so first the money, basically, if you think of it as like a flow chart goes to the mayor's office because like that gets the plotted plans you see around town get funded out of that. The rest of that money then goes to the grant process. And the committee itself, so currently that being Marion, Danielle, and Taylor are able to request a summary of the money the city's spending before it goes to grants. So, they're allowed to request that for the process. Are you saying the council, the council would get a report?
Yeah, yeah, a quarterly report as the funds get doled out to these entities, just to see what it's going towards the projects, just a simple chart, just like kind of what we get with retained hotel lodging tax, saying what each entity pays into us and that's how we end up with our money.
Got it.
That, I think that would be a really good thing for council to see because, I mean, we're entrusting everybody to do this and we would just like to see the fruits of what we're about ready to approve of.
That is outside the domain of my thing, but I'm, I'm just leaving it there, so.
You do get the retained, you get the hotel lodging tax report quarterly and it shows what is being transferred to the retained hotel lodging tax.
Right.
So, you will see that revenue side already in a report, so we could tie it to that same timeframe and just provide you with an expense report and you will see what has been spent from that.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing, and just for transparency purposes, so.
That's right.
Okay. And this is just an up or down vote, this is not legislation, so we just need a simple motion, but are there any questions, suggestions, anything like that before we approve this? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the City Revitalization Grant Committee application.
Motion by Kirkie. Number 2.
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor? Second, if I was saying hi?
Hi.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you, Lucy, for your very diligent work.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Second thing is, we did have a, we talked a little bit about the drive program that is being put on by the Port Authority, and we're working on some legislation for that. And so, Mary Kay is working with some folks to make sure that everything is going to flow okay, and that will be?
Our law director.
Our law director as well. And so, that would be coming to council here in the near future, so just we'll be looking out for that. And other than that, Mr. President, we have no further items this evening.
Thank you, sir. City Services Committee, Mr. Evelyn.
Mr. President, you said he was a recipient?
Mr. President, you said he was a recipient of a, a real nice little donation from Elks Lodge 797 here in town. They donated $750 toward the purchase of an automatic defibrillator for the police department. Now, obviously, we want to accept that. It's prepared as an emergency, because if you need a defibrillator, it's an emergency, right? So, I think it's, like, this is, we're very, very fortunate to receive that. Congratulations to Chief on the, on the award. I'd ask for first reading to accept the, the grant, first reading on accepting the grant. Title only, please.
Second.
Motion by Evelyn, second by, sorry, missed that. Lierman. To, for resolution 2207, first reading. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution accepting a gift from the Elks Lodge 797 for the City of Wilmington Police Department and declaring an emergency.
I'd request the second or third reading by title only, please.
Second.
Motion, second for suspension of rules, resolution 2207, roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution accepting a gift from the Elks Lodge 797 for the City of Wilmington Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Move for passage, please.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Resolution 2207 passes.
One other item that's not legislative, Mr. President, at least legislation as far as this Council's concerned, but the state of Ohio just passed, something I think was very interesting, and that is that they have passed legislation that protects war memorials within the state of Ohio from anything that could possibly happen to them. Just, I believe it's signed into law by the governor. But that legislation had an origin in Wilmington, Ohio, interestingly enough. And I think for Council's identification, maybe our resident historian Jonathan McKay might be able to shed a little light on how the cemetery played a role in the promulgation of that legislation.
Thank you, Councilman Evelyn. This law, and I'm not going to take up too much time, because I can go really deep into this, but it's going to be in the newspaper tomorrow. And this is, this is extremely important legislation for historical markers of the military type. And what it is, when we were ready to inherit the cemetery, the old Sugar Grove Association was, were going to sell the cannon that would sit out in front of the war memorial. And these cannon were part of the Grand Army of the Republic, and they needed money, basically, to stay afloat. And there was an lawsuit that was filed in the courts, and there was a lot of back and forth. And basically, the old Sugar Grove Cemetery Association went to funk before anything could really truly happen, and, and it was a good thing. When we inherited the cemetery, the lawsuit was still going on. One of the first things that we said was, whoa, we don't want to sell these cannon. Brian was law director then, and it was, it was asked, you know, we want to do this? And we've all, everybody was like, no, we do not want to sell these cannon now that we've inherited the cemetery. And so, that's how this legislation came to be, and it protects war memorials at any site. So, our cannon are now protected, because they're at a site in a cemetery, at a war memorial dedicated to any troop. Same way with the tank that sits in Blanchester. And our own local historical society is going to have to document these sites that, in Clinton County, that are now protected. And so, Blanchester, our and Sugar Grove Cemetery. But it was talked about that Wilmington was the cause of this, and I think it is a great thing for the state of Ohio to be able to say we've done this, because history disappears every single day. There's approximately 75 acres of Civil War battlefields that disappeared every single year. Seventy-five acres. And so, this protects things like that. And these cannon, they're not ours. They are property of the Grand Army of the Republic, which we were a recipient of. And, and now, law says that. So, and, and we cannot just get rid of them, because we need money. And thank goodness, we don't need money, because we stretched those funds, and then the citizens were very gracious enough to grant us a, a cemetery levy to help protect our cemetery and further give it beauty. So, I'm really excited about this. I love history, as everybody knows, and this is a great thing. That way, our history is protected. And I know our historical society will work well with, with Brian to make sure that everything gets documented properly and taken care of, and I, and I hope the rest of the county does as well, because we need to protect what's ours, and we need to showcase what is ours, because it is important. And those cannon might have been in a very significant battle that we just don't know about. And they might have been fired at Gettysburg, they might have been fired at, at Ficksburg, they might have been fired at, at, at a Battle of the Sea, we don't know. But what we do know is that they're going to stay here in Clinton County, they're going to stay in the city of Wilmington, and they're going to stay in Sugar Grove because of this new law. So, I'm sorry I drummed on, but it is super important, and thank you, Councilman Evelyn, for allowing me to do that.
They took three tries to the legislature, probably about six or seven different years in various, various legislatures, before this finally got to pass. All the veterans groups in the state of Ohio are going to be very thankful that this was, this was done. And Wilmington to have a part of it at the very beginning, I think, is really kind of interesting. It's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have a question. Jonathan, you kept getting ordered protected, protected what?
From, protected from being sold. And I'm not talking about us, I am talking about anywhere in the state of Ohio.
No, you were specifically talking about the cannon, and you kept saying they were protected.
Right.
Why are they protected?
They are protected from being sold now, or being gotten rid of. They, they can note, I mean, not that we were going to do that, but, but in, in the very beginning, the Sugar Grove Cemetery Association was going to sell the cannon, because they needed money.
Yeah, they were trying to survive.
Right, they're just trying to survive.
What the word protected meant?
From, from what I understand, Mayor, the, the state law now protects all war memorials from any sort of, from being taken down for any reason. Now, the, well, we got a statue out there, granite statue, that couldn't be removed. Anybody else? If there was a, you know, some other purpose for the veterans thing down on the northeast corner of the courthouse square, if some, somebody were to say, now, we want to use that ground for something else, it couldn't be done.
Because of Hockdog City.
Yeah, exactly. But it's not just for Wilmington or Clinton County, it's all over the state of Ohio, all memorials and so forth, kind of a big thing.
Yeah.
Cool. Is that all you had, sir?
It's all.
All right, thank you. All right. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items of legislation. Our first is three readings on resolution 2208, which is enacting tax incentive review council recommendations. It's an annual resolution for businesses that get reviewed. They've all been recommended for continuance. This was Bright Farms, ARSDN, the Jump Hanger. We discussed this pretty extensively in committee. Are there any questions about this?
Brad, can I vote on this, since I'm on that committee?
Which committee?
I'm on the tax levy incentive committee.
What? I would say yes.
Okay.
Big problem?
Okay.
There was a notation there about nurses, what was the issue about that?
They're, they're falling behind, so they're, I, I don't know the specific terminology, but they're, they have specific things they have to do by the next annual review, specific things they have to address.
Their, their, their tax abatement is predicated on them having so many employees year over year. And as the automotive industry has suffered, as have they, and, and trying to keep, and so the tax incentive review committee said, we're still going to allow you to have that abatement, but we would really like you to try to get those numbers back up, because that is part of the requirement, is to keep those numbers up. So, that's the only notation that they're first through. And, and as was noted earlier, this is a precedent that's been set with other companies. We give them a warning, we give them a year to try to do this, we give them some time to try to get those numbers back where they need to be. So, this is a, a, a regular occurrence sometimes with that committee, and they have approved it, and it has gone to the county commissioners, and it just takes the city's approval, too.
Any additional questions? All right, I move to the first reading only on resolution 2208, by title only.
Second.
Motion by Albright, second by Perky, first reading, resolution 2208. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Abstain?
Abstain.
We have Osborne and McKay abstaining. Motion passes. May we have first reading, please?
A resolution enacting tax incentive review council recommendation.
Can we do three readings if we have two abstentions?
No.
Okay. So, we can only do one reading?
Kind of a timeline are we on with this? Is it going now?
It's, you're fine.
Okay.
Would, would, can we do two at the next meeting?
No.
No.
You can never do, if two people are abstaining, you can never suspend the rules.
Suspend.
And, and I didn't catch the second on that.
Osborne. Oh, the second.
You seconded the motion.
Oh, I did.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Does it have to be done by a court?
I think so. I still...
There. Mr. Rivers? I'm trying, yeah. Bob, what, what was your recent presentation?
My employer, Free Oaks, survived by the property taxes, only in seven seconds. There's a, can you tell me what that, what that informal, from the ethics commission, the informal...
Yeah, the, uh, it was 2003. I don't, I don't remember if he's correct. At that point, Dr. just said, we initially fought, maybe, because he had no administrative capacity or any, any, any way to affect their decision-making process, or, but ultimately, that is working for them, it offered them to some extent, or they lose value to some extent. Either way, it determined that teacher, it was pretty much on point for his, so he does need to abstain. His is a little more, like...
I, I don't know if I need to or not.
Yeah, I know, it's a little more...
Yeah. I mean, I approved it in a commit, I, I'm on the tax levy incentive committee, just by nose.
Like, you, I don't see what your conflict is, you're saying that...
Yeah, that's why I asked, I just wanted to...
And to an extent, I would feel comfortable with you not abstaining. I just don't see why you would have a conflict. You're, you're effectively promulgating the same position that you had there.
Oh, well.
I mean, I would feel comfortable with you doing, if you felt comfortable.
I, I feel comfortable doing, but I just wanted to make sure...
Yeah, I, I think we'd be fine with that, that would be a six, sevens.
Then Andrew, I vote yea.
Did you still have some?
Not if he's going to do that.
So, motion, motion carries, uh, uh, six to one.
Correct.
No, six to one.
Six to one of extension.
With one, six, oh. Which, second, Charles.
All right.
Now it's civils.
All right, I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give resolution 2208, second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Have motion, second for, second, third reading, resolution 2208. Do we have roll call, please?
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Motion carries, one of extension. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution enacting tax incentive review council recommendation.
Move to pass the, the resolution 228, Azra.
Second.
Motion, second for passage. Roll call, please.
Osborne?
Abstain.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
And Lierman?
Yes.
Resolution 2208 passes, one of extension by Osborne.
Our second item will be less contentious. We have, I sure hope, we have three readings on ordinance 2212, which is making one supplemental appropriations for $2,200 from the jump in individuals, and this is for the new phone system for the court probation portion. Any specific questions about that? All right, let's see. I move to give the first reading only on ordinance 2212, by title only.
Second.
Motion by Albright, second by Osborne, first reading, ordinance 2212. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
Ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance 2212, second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion for suspension of rules. Do we have roll call?
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading?
Ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to pass ordinance 2212, Azra.
Second.
Motion, second for passage. Roll call, please.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Did you vote, Lierman, I didn't hear you?
Yes.
Soft spoken bill, or, ordinance 2212 passes. Did you hear it?
Our final legislative item is resolution 2209, this is paying for expenses incurred in the prior fiscal year, these that have now payments. They were incurred in 2021 and have paid in 2022. Are there any questions about any of this? Seeing none, seeing none, I give the, I move to give the first reading only on resolution 2209, by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, resolution 2209. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing payment of expenses incurred in prior fiscal year.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give resolution 2209, second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second for suspension of rules, roll call, please.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
That passes, may we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution authorizing payment of expenses incurred in prior fiscal year. A resolution authorizing payment of expenses incurred in prior fiscal year.
Move to pass Resolution 2209, Azra?
Second.
Motion second for passage, Resolution 2209. Roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehrman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Resolution 2209 passes.
The only thing I'd like to thank Auditor Vance and Attorney Ruddy for all their work on miscellaneous transfer mission to increase transparency and efficiency. That'll be coming soon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perky.
A few things tonight, Mr. President.
You do?
See if we can make this meeting last another hour. I'm kidding, kidding. So, most of these we've spoken about before, so if you recall our last council meeting, we had a public hearing to discuss re-zoning of a property on West Main Street. Don't have the address in front of me, I'm sorry, I think it was in the 100 block, so. It's the Health Source property that was going to be purchasing Dr. Carl Zikovsky's chiropractic practice, and removing that building, tearing it down, and having building new ones, so. The developers from that project asked if it would be possible for us to have a second and third reading. Based on the underwhelming response to our public hearing, I thought that it was probably fair for us to go ahead and move forward, so. Are there any questions or anything, has anybody had any comments they've entertained over the last few weeks, so? Okay. If not, I'll move to suspend the rules and regulations. Regulations, give ordinance 2207, second, third reading by title only.
Second. Second for suspension of the rules, ordinance 2207. May we have roll call, please?
Snar?
Yes.
Lehrman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading?
An ordinance changing the zoning of real property located on West Main Street in the City of Wilmington.
I move to pass ordinance 2207, it's red.
Sorry.
Motion second for passage, ordinance 2207. Roll call, please.
Lehrman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
And Snar?
Yes.
Ordinance 2207 passes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is the first and second reading of ordinance 2208. If you remember, last, in our last meeting, we discussed the cost of living adjustment for the employees in the city of Wilmington. Acknowledging the fact that a 2% adjustment is needed right now, that it's probably not the extent of a greater compensation package that is needed. So, rather than have legislation built out of increase for the next three additional years, we decided to amend this just down to just doing an increase this year. I did speak with Greg at Human Resources, and he is committed to trying to put together a larger package, but we, I think every industry in the country right now is struggling with labor and staffing, and the city is no exception by any stretch, so hopefully this helps adjust to some of the inflation that we're seeing, and it's just the first of several things, so. We did kind of vet this through Mary Kay, as always, because we want to make sure that, of course, we have the money for all these projects, and even acknowledging that there may be something additional coming, we're good to go on that. So, are there any other questions, or we were asked to do a second, a first and second reading because we needed the two weeks to make the edits to it, so bring it back today, but we wanted to keep the timing on pace for any employees so that they didn't fall behind in the adjustments, so. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, move for the first reading of ordinance 2208 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second for first reading, ordinance 2208. All favor sign five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 01948 to increase wages under the employee pay plan for calendar year 2022.
I don't know.
Thank you. Move to suspend the rules and give a second reading of ordinance 2208 by title only.
Second.
Motion for suspension of the rules, ordinance 2208, and a second by Albright. May we have roll call, please?
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehrman?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second reading?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 01948 to increase wages under the employee pay plan for calendar year 2022. Azra?
Excellent, thank you, sir. I want to make sure I add, because this is a public meeting, this was a 2% cost of living adjustment, I don't think I ever said the percentage, so.
Before we, can I ask a question?
Sure.
This says, the city of Wilmington desires to provide as additional two, an additional 2% cost of living increase to all non-maritaling employees in the city of Wilmington for calendar year 2022, which to me makes it retroactive.
Have we talked about this last time?
We did talk about this last time, it's not supposed to be retroactive.
Those could, they still could comport with the law, which is we can do it retroactively.
This question?
He just talked about, additionally, it's in the warehouse clause, which has no legal authority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And actually specifically, it doesn't say, in the actual, the ordinance, section one, it just says from the first page following passage of this, therefore cannot apply retroactively.
Okay.
Good catch.
Thank you.
So, to stay on our schedule, we'll ask for the third reading of ordinance 2209 in our next council meeting.
Over here.
Anything else on that one? Okay. Then moving on to item C on the agenda. This is the second reading of our residential tip. I know that this is another one we've been laboring for many, many months, but I'm excited to see this going forward, and I'll open the floor up to any discussion if you like, but I know I'm kind of beat the proverbial horse on this one, so. I don't want to, like said, if anyone in the audience has any questions, we're happy to, so. Seeing none, move for the second reading of ordinance, ordinance 2209 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by McKay, second reading, ordinance 2209. May we have roll call, please?
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehrman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Abstaining.
Motion carries, do we have second reading, please?
An ordinance declaring the improvement of a certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, creating an incentive district tip, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements made to be made or in the process of being made that directly benefit, or that once made will directly benefit, the parcel for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, providing related authorizations pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, sections 5709.40C, 5709.42, 5709.43, 5709.832, and 5709.85, and declaring emergency.
Yes. Did you, did you note that, Osborne abstaining?
Then let's do the third reading of that at our next council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing on the agenda is something that we've discussed at council and through several executive sessions, but we haven't discussed publicly, so I want to take a few moments, I'll try to be quick, Mr. President, to kind of run through how we landed at our council compensation. In the legislation, obviously, there's some whereas that kind of paint the timeline here, but in 2005, it was established that city council, as well as all the other elected officials, I believe, would be paid a minimum of the amount, a set salary, but not to fall below a minimum amount required to be eligible for PERS, which is our retirement system. So, given the changes in our local economy post-DHL, in 2009, they had a cha, a discussion while budgeting to kind of make some changes there. I think the ordinance actually was 5,000, or 5,090 was in 2013, to suspend the increase, so where council pay was, was essentially just frozen there. So, we've discussed the reasons in the past as to why we may want to re-up that. Obviously, we've now gone many years without, so there's kind of a large jump to me. Mary Kay and I calculated that out a little bit. It is, in effect, a little more than doubles what the compensation is, but it does then put everybody back on that level of person, so. We've.
Did you say double?
Uh-huh. It doubles.
That's a pretty good pay raise.
Well, then that's the reason why we're discussing this, right, so the.
I don't even, what's council person make?
$3,780 a year.
And it's going to go to what?
$8,500 a year.
Holy.
But it doesn't happen in this, in this council's term.
I don't care.
Can't receive an interim raise.
Yeah, so, part of the, part of the reason for the discussion of this now is because you can't, and you can't vote it while you're in term, so. We first took this up, if you remember, last September, when we found out that we couldn't discuss it because everyone, there was, everyone's running on post, so you can't have any, you can't gauge any speculative, like, anything that would affect you in your next term. So, the reason why we really wanted to bring this up now was to bring it for discussion, see whatever one thinks about it. One of the things that I, I've said this before, but I'll say again, I'm, I'm a little bit, it's odd to me that all seven, I would say, ran on a post. And in researching and discussing with people, trying to find, spark some interest in running for council, that was one thing I heard, was just not worth it, not worth the time. So, one of the things I thought that might be an added benefit would be if we can make it PERS eligible, you know, if there are people that are, have been in around the, you know, the public sector for a while that may be interested in trying to add some additional years on, so. That's where we got to this, Mary Kay and I had discussions about it. Like I said, here's where we're landing. So, the guy, if you look, there's an exhibit A attached to this, that's an estimate. PERS puts out a new update each year, but that's an estimate for what would be two years from now, so. Any questions?
Do we know what council was paid prior to taking the big price reduction that they took after DHL?
It would have been 42 or 4,800.
And Mary Kay has?
I have.
Going back.
Oh.
I hoard these things. Just a second. I think, did you say it was, when was the last year? I've got all these ordinances.
Well, that, for council, yes. Auditor and treasurer changed in 2015.
I think at one time it was either 4,200 or 4,800, it's almost dead or alive.
Right, in 2010, so I don't know whether it changed from that. It was $3,885 a year, which is only a hundred and some dollars more than what you're making now.
And I was under the impression that when they changed it, that was actually a math error, that made it different.
Right.
But it is where it is.
I feel like that we overtook, was that 10%?
Yeah.
Yeah. At the, at the post-DHL tightening of a belt.
Yeah, when we laid employees off, we went through the layoff in 2010 and laid off employees, and at the same time, we were asking employees to do voluntary furloughs, and so they were taking days off, they were working, but taking those as if they weren't back here working, and giving that back to the city, and city council at the time said, we want to show our support for those employees and do our fair share, and took a 10% cut, which was not very much of a cut, but then it just, it just stayed that way. Here, because it is incumbent upon this body to do this, like you're doing now, before you're running. And it would get to be October, November, and somebody'd say, oh, we should have done that, but you're running, and so then it felt uncomfortable, and it just was a vicious circle of that for all those years up to this point, so.
Yeah, and I can tell you from, from my own, obviously, we're all sitting up here, but none of us are guaranteed this because you all have to run again too, but it's always hard to have these discussions for me, because it feels, I can't tell you anything people hear more than politicians trying to give themselves rates, right, but in talking with Mary Kay, I feel that was the intent way back when was to provide, because you have PERS removed from your check anyway, was to provide you a minimum level to qualify. And obviously, the world has changed a lot, you know, there was a pretty sizable jump in PERS minimum from 2010 to today, but like I said, it's up for discussion, so.
That's what's really caused this to happen, is the fact that PERS was going in the hole, so if they raised the contribution, and, you know, we chose not to keep up with it at the time. What I'm trying to remember is, did we have the discussion of what other councils are making in cities of our size?
As far as last year when we were discussing?
Well, no.
Or back in 20?
Across the board now.
Oh, we can.
I didn't know if we had discussed that.
Pulled a few.
Ohio Municipalite has a report that they get, that we send information through every year, and so they compile it for municipalities all over the state of Ohio, and they would have some of that information as they were.
That's so much better than going to individual budget websites. We have budget websites.
That just makes sense to me, I mean, the mayor seems aghast. Aghast? Brian, go get my axe handle, if I approve this, I want you to beat me with it. You want to double your, more than double your salary? Are you kidding me? This will not pass the Sheila test. And Sheila's a waitress at Bob Evans, she works hard for her money and pays for taxes. You think she'd approve, you think she'd approve doubling? There's no way I'd be behind this. No way. You guys do what you want, okay? I would take it back over the number of years that we have not gotten any increase, and, you know, look at it that way, instead of today, we're doubling our salary.
Yeah, so, just, I'll tell you the, I think from, and again, well, this isn't, this is for a few years from now, but the increase from last year to this year was $12.
It's called government service, but don't do it for the money.
I remember the first time we discussed this, Kelsey, that was exactly what you said. I still don't know that this is a case where anyone's doing it for the money, but except, it's up for discussion, so. Anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to add?
Just curious, the other cities of our size, man.
I, Red, do you have access to that?
Do I personally?
Municipalite, HRDS. I'll get with Greg and see if we can find some comparable information.
Probably three readings anyways.
Oh, absolutely, I wouldn't dream of passing.
No, I'm just saying, you know, we have time.
Right, exactly, so we have, we have time.
Probably have more efficient discussion next time.
Break for next meeting for, to discuss, for sure, so. Anytime I think there's a, anything controversial like this, it's important to be transparent, to be as slow as possible with it, to give time for all opinions and ideas to be considered, so.
In my first term, when I was, I think back in 1985, 393, and then I stepped away because I was working night job at PBX, I'm thinking, back then it was 3,600. Didn't that sound about right, Matt? Do you remember that? I don't know, it was $3,600. And it was something like a $300 increment is what it was recommended, and then I remember covering it when I was on the other side of the media, about how everybody took a 10% pay cut. The most I can recall it's ever been, I'm thinking it was 4,200, somewhere like what Mary Kay was a little street, I remember the 10%.
We kept up with PERS until they started making those huge jumps.
Exactly.
We chose, we chose not to, but we, we used that criteria.
Yeah, so, any other discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll move for the first reading of, sorry, ordinance 2211 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion by Matt, second by Lehrman, for first reading. May we have roll call, please?
Evelyn?
No.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lehrman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have first reading, please?
An ordinance rescinding and/or revoking ordinance 5090, and hereby setting salaries of city council members and appointed salary officials to at least meet the minimum amount required by the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System to obtain one year of credit for one year of service.
Okay, we'll continue discussion at the next meeting. Second reading, then, please. Any other judiciary issues or questions for tonight? All right, that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar.
Yes, so, we have one piece of legislation, Resolution 2210, where we're seeking to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a lease purchase agreement for the acquisition of new automated trash truck, 2022, Dennis Eagle chassis, no less. Anyway, so, we have, we need one, obviously, as has been discussed previously. It's going to be paid for over three years, we have the money for the first year, and the next two years will be budgeted. So, there's a little bit more in the, you received it, but Cody's here if we have other questions.
Any questions?
He's been here for two hours.
These are always big purchases.
What is so?
I mean, he tried it out, he's been here for two hours, he probably.
What is so special, what's unique about that? Tell me the benefits of it.
Tell me the benefits of it.
As everyone knows, we pick up trash and recycling using automated trucks. The truck we currently use for trash is, we started using it in October of 16. It requires a lot of preventative maintenance, Brian can tell you, it has an auger in it that...
It's expensive.
Yeah, that will shred the trash as we pick it up, which is good, but the preventative maintenance is high, and this truck uses a traditional ram packing system, so once trash is in the truck, there's a big hydraulic ram that packs the trash. We demoed the truck 17th of February, all day, it was a Thursday.
Were there, were there other vendors or bidders considered?
Yeah, we did, the problem right now is, everyone knows, manufacturing, we contacted the company that makes our automated recycling truck, which is Loadmaster, and it's been a great truck, reliability wise, he said he couldn't tell us that they didn't have a truck available to purchase at all this year. The truck that we're considering right now...
Does anybody make business of leasing those things on a short-term basis?
What's that?
Does anybody lease those out on a short-term basis?
No one will really do a full-service lease, that's what me and Brian had talked about doing, but since we're so far away from the company that we would buy it from, they won't do the service lease.
Is that because of volatility, like the high amount of use, or...
It's our location.
Yeah.
Okay.
Travel time to and from if they have to service it. There is a company in Columbus that will service it, the cab and the truck, both.
Any other questions?
And they have a mobile, they have a mobile service unit as well.
How soon would you be able to get it?
The truck's ready to go right now with this matter of us.
He's going to go pick it up after the screening.
It's in Iowa, it's likely, probably pick it up and drop it back.
Cody, where's...
He's going to be on the route tonight.
It's in Iowa right now.
Where at?
Iowa.
Iowa.
Any other questions? Does this one settle back on the curb where they got it, instead of knocking them over into the street and stuff like that?
I can make that happen.
That's usually uneven terrain or operate here, right?
I was actually, I was, I was down at Song's store yesterday, I think, and there's an alley there, and the, the truck was trying to work on several cans, and, I mean, if those cans are set so close together, you can't get in between those to pick them up, then, you know, you'll knock a can over.
Yeah.
And he knocked over a couple of cans, and after he was done, he got out and picked them back up and put them where they should be.
That was me.
You know, I thought that was you. Good job. You didn't know I was watching, did you?
Nope.
Well, maybe that speaks back to our staffing issues, so, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's been, it's been tough.
I'll say that.
Cravens can probably attest to it.
You guys do phenomenal work.
I'm not talking about that.
One, one question, then, what will we do with the current trucks we have, just put them out for sale from what we have?
The truck that we currently use for trash will use as a back, it needs some work, but once we get the new truck, we're going to pull it in the shop and do the repairs to it that it needs, and then it can be used as a backup for trash or recycling.
But you should be, you need to be aware, like, every three to four years, this is what, we need to do this every three or four years, we need to rotate our fleet.
And that's the problem, with every three or so years, even with this new truck, the engineers told me that in three and a half years, the arm on this truck will need to rebuild. So like Brian was saying, if you can turn one around every three years, you get pretty good resale value out of it, and you're not requiring a ton of maintenance in that three-year period, with it being on a three-year lease, it'll be paid for before that arm has to be rebuilt.
Because we don't have a backup, like you guys are saying, we've, we've had situations where we've had to suspend recycling pickup, because we don't have that backup.
And it kills, it kills our manpower when, when an automated truck goes down, because then we're out in the trash route with three guys versus one guy.
Like, it's on a comparative basis, you can compare it, Brian, you want to, but this now, being on the school board, it's like buses, I mean, buses, you have to rotate them every so often, the older buses are going to break down and cost you more money, so in the long run, you're spending more upfront, but then you're going to save money in the long...
Right, and when they break down, we have to put three guys out instead of one.
Right, right.
But, it's a three-year contract, so what sort of maintenance, new car warranty? Do you get, just go, you want to what, the warranty?
Yeah, John and Brian and I discussed adding a three-year warranty for the arm, so it'll cover anything for the arm itself for three years. As a Cummins motor, Allison transmission, the Allison, the transmission is covered for, I can look up all the stuff, just give me a minute.
It's a year, isn't it? Is it a year, John?
One year, but we, we elected to take the option for the extended warranty.
Yeah. So the price of...
Extended warranty for the life of it.
Yeah, so all the cylinders have, the motor is covered for two years already, Allison transmission's covered for three years already, and that's without paying anything additional. The additional cost to cover the arm for three years is $5,641.69. All the hydraulics are covered for a year.
It's theoretically, we ought to save a little money on maintenance costs. Oh, yeah, oh my gosh.
Just like, you're in the automotive business, yeah, you always need an extended warranty.
Yeah, our maintenance has been awful, this, with our truck right now, as far as cost, and it's the one...
Our other issue is that we don't have a mechanic, and we can't afford it.
We can't afford one. We had one, but we can't afford one.
We can't afford it.
Our mechanic left for a better, higher-paying job, and we can't afford it.
We've, we've got Mason from wastewater, and he's pretty decent, but he's not as familiar as Justin works with diesel engines and...
Any other questions? If not, I move to give first reading only, Resolution 2210 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Snar, second by McKay, first reading, Resolution 2210, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Cerney Motors, a TriVesta company, declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2210, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second for suspension of rules, Resolution 2210, may we have roll call, please?
Turkey?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second read?
A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Cerney Motors, a TriVesta company, and declaring an emergency.
I move to pass Resolution 2210, it's written.
Second. Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Turkey?
Yes.
Resolution 2210 passes. Go get your truck.
So we have an announcement, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day will be held the morning of Saturday, April 9, at the wastewater treatment plant on Nelson Avenue, collections being funded by the stormwater utility fee. City residents will be allowed to drop off the following items free of charge: antifreeze, old oil, oil-based paint, stains, paint thinners. Reminder, it's important to keep hazardous waste out of the normal waste stream and ultimately out of our waterways. This has been a cooperative endeavor by the mayor's office and the code enforcement sanitation wastewater and stormwater departments. Now, as a collection will be announced soon, items can only be left during event, not before or after, and this is only open to city residents, IDs will be checked. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Snar. That completes the council reports. You do have the income tax report before you, it was a pleasure.
It would be accepted, Mr. President. Second.
We'll give that to Lierman.
Okay, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Report is accepted. Now we come to the portion meeting, we're open to public, anyone who'd like to discuss anything with council, please come forward, state your name and address, go in once, go in twice. And we have no executives...